Well, with that, we have some very fun decorations in this room, out in the lobby, out in the courtyard, because we are going to proclaim March 2025 as Arts Education Month. It will be read by Dr. Joseph Dan Brozey and Dr. Christopher Burns, our arts resource specialists.
And Board, I also want to introduce you to the newest member of our team. This is Ms. Ashley Lowe, who has been an employee, a teacher, a dean in our school district for a long time. Excellent, uh, thing that's in our team, because that means the arts department, our role, and we love the arts department. So she's gonna join us.
I already did that in the morning. Yeah, I even ended the stream talking about that.
We all were on pocket. Very good.
Cheers, cheers.
Thank you, thank you. Whereas, the School Board of Osceola County, Florida, recognizes the arts. Find a dance, a theater, and arts as an important element of a complete and balanced education. And...
Whereas, learning in and through the arts enables students to develop critical thinking and problem-solving skills, imagination and creativity, discipline, alternative ways of communication, and express feelings and ideas, cultural understanding, and support academic success across the curriculum, as well as personal growth outside of the classroom. And...
Whereas, imagination and creativity are increasingly understood as critical capacities needed for success in the 21st century workforce. And...
Whereas, recent Florida Department of Education data of all 12th grade students, vetted by multiple major university researchers, conclusively show the more arts classes take and the higher the student achievement in all measures, including graduation rate, GPA, state assessments, and the SAT regardless of ethnicity or socioeconomic status. And...
Whereas, the arts can transform our schools into havens of creativity and exploration, places where students want to learn, teachers want to teach, and all members of the learning community are more engaged and motivated. And...
Whereas, high-quality, school-based arts education involves a wide range of partners, including educators, administrators, parents, artists, community members, elected officials, business leaders, and local and statewide arts organizations. And...
Whereas, we applaud the efforts and dedication of arts educators and advocates around the state, and call for school and community leaders to continue to broaden and strengthen their efforts to provide arts education for every student in every school, every year.
Now, therefore, the School Board of Osceola County, Florida hereby proclaims the month of March 2025 as Arts Education Month, and we urge all citizens to join in recognizing the special contributions that the arts make in the lives of the children of Florida.
I have a motion wave of this video. The second wave is Garcia. All those in favor?
Hi.
All those in books? Motion passes. That was a performance today. So... Some of our high school ceramic students have made some gifts. You'll see, um, gifts from Tocco High School and Osceola High School art students made those personally for you.
Please check out all of the incredible artwork in the courtyard, in the lobby. After the meeting up here, we're gonna leave it out all night, so this way our employees can see it on their way in as well.
Thank you.
And because we do think about the whole child here in Osceola County District, we now have our recognition of athletes for the Winter OBC presented by Ryan Adams, our direct, uh, district coordinator of athletes. Wait, Ryan, sorry. Let's get ahead.
Uh, plenty of...
Sorry. We have so many presentations. Um, we are going to recognize the National Rockstar Custodian of the Year, 24th Door, Mr. Ramiro Hernandez Julia, presented by Dr....
Thank you, Madam Chair. For Ramiro Hernandez, being a school custodian is not just a job, it's a way of life. Ramiro started working in the school district in 2018 as the current lead plant manager for Toho Caliga High School. He has worked at this school since relocating with his wife and family from South Florida. Ramiro's wife is a teacher in the district, and their daughters attend, attended Osceola schools. Hernandez has a strong work ethic and is happiest when he is busy checking items off his to-do list. So says his principal, probably. He's appreciated by his coworkers, leadership team, and especially the students at the school. After getting to know Ramiro, it's easy to see why he was selected as this year's National Rockstar Custodian. Ramiro operates a team of 16 custodians to support Toho's 100 staff members and 2,900 students. Ramiro says he loves the kids and his interactions with them. He enjoys seeing them learn and grow during their time at school and the years beyond. Mr. Michael Glasberg, Assistant Principal at Toho, nominated Hernandez because he describes him as unselfish, generous, and dedicated, all characteristics that embody the nine qualifying traits of the Rockstar of Cleaning Award, including integrity, determination, and service to others. Ramiro's work ethic can be seen daily while cleaning and maintaining the school. Often arriving at work early and leaving late, Ramiro has been known to complete tasks requested by his administrators even before they can be assigned. Ramiro is organized and has great attention to detail, taking pride in making the school look the best it can be. He knows what he, he knows what to do before he being told to do it. His, he runs his team of custodians like a father figure, delegating tasks to teams and offering tough love when needed. But Hernandez works well with the team and respects everyone. Ramiro enjoys his job and is appreciative of everyone that he works with. He lives to help others and enjoys the fact that his current job allows him to help many people daily. Winning the Rockstar of Cleaning Award is a huge honor for Ramiro and our school district. He's very proud of this accomplishment. He received 390,000 votes during the 60-day nationwide voting period, and was only one of five awards given this year. Maintaining schools cleanliness is often a thankless job, but we recognize the challenging work and thank even each of our custodians for their dedicated service. Mr. Hernandez, please come forward.
So, congratulations. Thank you for everything that you do at Toho, but the example that you said, not only for your team, but for custodians district-wide, means everything to the students that attend our schools, and the teachers that teach in our schools, and the other staff members that work in and around our building. So thank you so much.
Thank you, I really appreciate it. I'm very much appreciated.
I know, I know. That's what, you know what? And that's probably why you are who you are, but, um, like it or not, you're a rockstar custodian.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
We are onto our recognition of our Winter OBC athletes.
Thank you. Evening Board, Sean, thanks for the opportunity to be here tonight. Uh, we do have some games tonight that these athletes are going to, so we'll have to bring it in. Uh, tonight we are gonna, we are here to recognize eight of our winter sports teams. One thing to keep in mind when we talk about all these athletes, as good as they are on the floor and reports, uh, combined GPA average, we get players that are coming out tonight with a 3.214 overall GPA. It's very exciting, very interesting to look at that. Uh, so without further ado, we're gonna, uh, welcome Gateway High School, their girls' basketball team. Head coach, uh, Justin Marino. The legendary coach, Sean Wooden, said it best, it's the little details that are vital, little things, uh, make big things happen. And if you look at Gateway basketball, this is their first OBC championship ever in the history of the school. Not a proud principal at all. They were 20 and 7, they were district runner-up, advanced into the regionals. They were led this year by a thousand point scorer, uh, junior Alyssa Marino. She's career to 1,000. She was also recently named the 5A FACA Player of the Year. She was fifth in Florida, uh, in assists, and she made 73 threes, which was second in Florida. Um, and she was just named hot off the press today. She was, uh, not only named first-team all-county, but she was named Player of the Year. Great programs have players that follow up through, and they have a ninth grader in Ashlyn Day. She almost averaged a triple-double this year, 22 points per game, 10 rebounds, and seven steals. She was also named first county, uh, OBC, and their team averaged a 3.092 GPA. Congratulations. Parents, if you wanna come up and take a quick photo?
Yes.
Gotta slide in a little bit, though. We don't wanna cut out Mr. Long. Gotta look at your mom. All right, congratulations, straight y'all. Congratulations, straight y'all. All right, next is gonna be Gateway Boys Soccer.
Go Gateway!
Kinda like you gotta take a photo. All right, we have Gateway Boys Soccer, head coach, Sager Patel. Not only were they the OBC champions, it's their first championship since 2012. They posted a 17-3 record, district runner-up, advanced into the semifinals and the regionals. They lost a heartbreaking 1-2-1 contest, that was a fun game to watch, great decision to do already now. They were led this year by Adrian Rodriguez, scored 17 goals. Joseph Ramirez, higher, has a council right, uh, seven assists. Their team GPA was a 3.01 GPA. OBC champions, Gateway Soccer. Next, we're gonna have St. Todd High School's Girls Waistlifting Team. St. Todd High School, head coach, Cory Hahn. Uh, I don't know how many Coach of the Year awards he's won, how many county Coach of the Year awards he's won, but he's won a lot. One of the very impressive things you'll always think, say, hopefully in the future at St. Todd. The program was built at St. Todd years ago. Cory took the reins and he's one of them. There were over 70 girls participating in the program at St. Todd. That is a coach who builds a culture that kids wanna be a part of. Why they are here today with their 14th in a row, OBC championship, 26-2 overall record this year, district champions, they had 28 medalists, third place at the regionals with 10 medalists, six state qualifiers, Morgan, uh, Hocken was fifth place. They had a handful of school and county records broken, all while maintaining a 3.5 team GPA. Parents, if you wanna come up and take a picture?
He should've brought everything.
Should've, man. He had all the room. Congratulations. Free girls soccer. Head coach, Scott Marlega. They've lotted out. Harmony Girls Soccer, they were not only OBC champions, but it was their second in championship in a row. They posted a 13-6-1 record this year. They were district champions, which was their third in a row. They advanced in the second round of the regional tournament. The team was led by Gabriella Guzman, who had 20 goals and 11 assists. They were able to maintain a 3.4819 GPA this year.
I need to see the other guys.
Congratulations, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. From Osceola High School, we have Nathan Little.
Harmony High School.
Harmony High School.
Oh, I said, oh, I said, Harmony Wrestling. All right, we have Nathan Little here today. Nathan kept the streak alive so far. Uh, we have 18 consecutive years of a wrestler winning a state championship. Nathan, not only was our OBC champion, not only was he 48-0 on the season, was he a district, regional, and OBC champion, he won every single tournament they were in, and he is our state champion this year. We send a lot of wrestlers to the state tournament. We have year after year after year, so it is great to continue that streak going, but he did this all while maintaining a 3.2 GPA. All right, we actually have Osceola High School Competitive Cheer. Ladies, we are gonna have to... Osceola High School Competitive Cheer, head coach, Rashandra Lawson, uh, the principal of Dr. Kennedy is here tonight. They're OBC champions this year, their first championship since 2014. They advanced in the every state regionals, and they maintain a 3.230 team GPA. Congratulations, Osceola.
Step! Let's get it up! Let's get this party started! Hey! Start it, hey! Get it started! Ain't no party like the cowboy party, 'cause the cowboy party don't stop! Ain't no party like the cowboy party, 'cause the cowboy party don't stop! Hey, hey, hey! Ain't no party like the cowboy party, 'cause the cowboy party don't stop! One, two! Let's go, cowboy!
Ladies, thank you very much. Great job.
Picture.
Here, pick another one. Yeah, you want your assistant coach to...
Sorry, Dana, that was on me. Oh, we did? Oh, sorry.
Girl, the carcass. Next, we have Osceola High School Girls Wrestling. Okay, we have the Osceola High School Girls Wrestling Program led by Justin Lewuski. They are OBC champions, they're fourth in a championship in a row. The team was led by three-time OBC champion, Anaya Wayne, who also finished sixth at state, two-time OBC champion, Teola Ramirez, who was third at state, and Denali Doffin, OBC district and regional champion, she finished fifth at state. Erica Hernandez was the district champion and fourth. They had a ton of medalists, uh, from Osceola, all while maintaining a 3.03 GPA. Osceola. Yeah, parents, do parents wanna come to the phone? Sorry.
They'll also be on the social media.
Congratulations, ladies. Two more, both of Osceola, Boys Wrestling. All right. Osceola High School Boys Wrestling, head coach, Chris Pittigan, OBC champions, their third title in a row. The team was led this year by Izzy Sheriff Off, who was fifth at state, Nathan DeBraer, third at state, I apologize, not counting this right, David Yee Sanchez, uh, was the OBC champion and sixth at state. Again, Osceola High School has a very, very long tradition of having not only state champions and medalists at wrestling, so congratulations, all while maintaining a team GPA of 3.150. Congratulations. Parents, all right, let's get in super tight. Yep, we're gonna have to probably get a couple rows down. Like you guys have done before. Thank you very much. We got room. Last but never least, Osceola High School Boys Basketball. Osceola High School Boys Basketball, head coach, Steve Mason, posted a 25 and 10 record. Just like we talked about earlier this year, we talked about Osceola volleyball, Osceola, um, girls volleyball. They put together a schedule, a very competitive schedule, in order to qualify for not only the state tournament, but they put themselves in position to be the number one seed in the Legion, which gives them a point four advantage. And if you saw any games this year and you missed the OBC championship at Gateway, I would encourage you to go back into the National Federation High School Network and watch that game, because it was an instant classic. Um, it was great to see both teams compete, obviously, and Osceola came out on top over their friendly rival of St. Cloud. Um, but this is their third title in four years. They were district champions, they advanced to the regional final, where they lost a heartbreaker to Sarasota. I know Sarasota went on to lose in the final four, so I don't know if that guy makes you feel any better or not, but, um, it was such a great season. This year, they were led by, uh, junior Luke McCrimmon, 19 points per game, and just recently named today the two-time OBC Player of the Year. Also led by Jordan Isaac, 17 points per game, also being named first-team all-county, with Jordan Mason with 13 points per game, and his team maintained a 3.210 team GPA.
And just real quick, no team can be as successful without support from administration, and, uh, Dr. Kennedy was a great support this year, uh, even as far as after we lost that last game, guys were crying in the bleachers, and she was up there talking to them. She did a lot to support us with team meals and coming to all the games. No one gets these jackets, except coaches and players, that's it. So I ordered one, and Dr. Kennedy will have a new, uh, name in front of her, Coach Dr. Kennedy.
Coach Wilson, you just set yourself up, because you're gonna have a lot of people that are gonna need some help. Any parents, we, we good? All right, congratulations.
Right, that we are onto 2.05 on our exceptional student education statistics for the 2025-26 school year. Presented by Cory Hahn, Director of Exceptional Student Education. This presentation is an information item only, there is no action that will be taken. Um, it falls under the responsibility of the superintendent, and we are getting a copy from kids.
Thank you, um, good evening, Lord, uh, leadership and our community. Uh, we're very eager to share our updates for the 25-26 school year. Uh, we've really worked hard to make sure that we're providing high-quality teaching and learning experiences in a least restricted environment. And, um, first of all, I'd like to, um, make sure that everybody is aware that we see ourselves as a support to, um, the school district as a whole. So our mission is truly embedded within the school district's mission. Um, so we are, the EFC department will provide that speculative and innovative support that helps to inspire students with disabilities to reach their highest potential as responsible, productive citizens. Um, tonight, I'm going to go over, uh, a little bit of our common terms. There's, in special education, there happens to be a lot of technical terminology that we use, so I'm not going to go in depth in those now, but they happen in front of you as you go through the presentation as well. Um, you will see some, um, yellow highlights on the slides, those indicate they are words that are... Those indicate they are words that are on the faculty directory. I will go over some historical overview and a data trend, some data trends that we've had that are pertinent to the changes that we're making today, as well as obviously going through our enhancements and updates for our 25-26 school years. And then finally, I'll go through our next steps for the district as well as our special services. So these are our classroom terms, again, you have them printed for you. So historical overview and data trend. Our work started for this process in March of 2023. There was a board committee convened for our department and they met three times. The, we started this work in March of 2023 and the board had asked us to convene a committee for ESE. And we had three meetings and then the committee presented to the board what some recommendations were for the following school years and moving forward. One of those items happened to be movement into hubs for our self-contained classrooms because they felt that we could consolidate our resources much better. So that work has continued through the advisory committees that we've had moving forward. We did continue that advisory committee last school year. Many of the same members that were on the board committee. But what we were finding in that board committee was that, or in the continued committee that we had last year, was that often our members were from one particular region of our school district. So for this school year, we asked our schools to have a representative from each school so that we would have representation through the whole district. So we've had that process going on this year. We do meet quarterly with each community and then whole group twice a year. And so our department has also had some changes over the past few years. The first was our movement into, instead of having self-contained classrooms identified by disability types, we really chose to have them by their curriculum being taught, so access point standards or best standards. With that change, we also had, because it was primarily focused on the elementary level, we also had our program specialist supports change in that manner as well. As we progressed through the years, we actually divided up, because our school district is getting so much larger, we've divided up into communities and those communities are regions. And so we have like the St. Cloud region too, in the central Kissimmee and the western Kissimmee, and then our Point Sienna area. So that's how we've divided our community, our communities. And so each of those communities from our department level, we have a board certified behavior analyst, two program specialists. We also have a speech language lead and then a compliance person that oversees compliance for the 13 to 14 schools that are in that community. So those individuals will meet to discuss trends within their schools and really try to problem solve if issues are arising as well. This particular school year, we've also had an external audit of our resources and that has helped us really define and develop the service models that we're looking to do for the upcoming school year. This work had really started again with the Board Advisory Council. Last school year, we had received some data from DOE and this is just a snapshot of it. It is the, right, what you're seeing in front of you is the percentage of students that are in self-contained. The districts listed up there are what are considered our size-like districts. And the schools that are, or the districts that are highlighted are really the districts that have the closest number of ESE students to Osceola County. One of the things that we are seeing here is that we are 79th out of 80 as far as the percentage of students that are in that separate class setting. I know that there are not 80 districts. This is, there are also charter schools and some other programs that are added to that when DOE provides that information to us. But this was presented to principals last school year and so part of our work became increasing those inclusive opportunities because as you can see, our average was much higher than the state average and several of our other districts that are in our areas. So when we provided that information to the school principals, our next steps with that was to provide them with a list of students that are currently, or were currently at the time, in those self-contained settings. And what their work was tasked with was really to identify some professional learning opportunities and what the barriers were for students to have those increased inclusive opportunities. So we had them do that last, or the end of last school year and our department then created some professional learning opportunities, which we did through Wednesday PLC times in the afternoons, July through October. Then, since this school year has started, we then monitored our changes for LRE, which is the least restricted environment, to see how we are progressing with increasing those inclusive opportunities. We've provided monthly updates to administration and then Dr. Teresa and I have actually had several individual school meetings to really go in more in-depth student by student to see what we could do to reduce those barriers. Okay, so moving into some of our enhancements and updates for the upcoming school year. As I said, we have been trying to increase those inclusive opportunities in all schools. And students that still need that individualized support, they will have those identified at certain schools. And the reason I brought up communities earlier is because we really are trying to have those types of classrooms within each community so that you're not having a lot of distance between one end of the county and the other. We also have been spending quite a bit of time updating the service models offered for those separate class settings within the continuum of services. And what I'm going to do is go from our most inclusive opportunities that we are working to make some updates of. I did not include our support facilitation models because that, there's really no changes to those. But we'll start with our most inclusive opportunities. I think the one I am most excited about is our blended, it was called blended prepay, but it also can be inclusive BPK. So this upcoming school year, we have been able to make it so that every single elementary school and K-8 will have a blended prepay at their school and that will allow our students to have, even before they start into kindergarten, the inclusive opportunity that they need. Project Search is one of our transition programs. We really don't have a whole lot of changes there. However, we would like to expand some of our opportunities that we've had within the school district of Osceola. With our, also again, within our general education settings, the 40 to 79% really references the amount of time a student with a disability with their non-disabled peers. So this is an area that we're really looking to focus in more on. Our students will have a general education home room and then as they have need to have services outside with only their disabled peers, we would then have them pulled out for those services. And those could include things like counseling or social skills. It could be therapy. It could be the related services for some of those weaker content academic areas so that we can really hone in on those impacts. Now moving into where we go into separate class settings, this is where we're looking at potentially coving for the upcoming school year. And so we've got several different service model types and these service models are really geared more towards the student's needs rather than by disability type, which is a change from the past. So for our first separate class setting that we'll talk about, it's our developmental K through two program. These are students that typically are in the process of meeting criteria for the access point curriculum. And so they're starting to see, even as we're intervening and providing those interventions, that our students are demonstrating that they will likely, that we will likely make a proposal for access points instruction. Also, if they have interventions for behavior, even though we are implementing those with fidelity, there is that potential that we're still intervening with crisis intervention and those would, those students would be the ones that would potentially identify for meeting a separate class setting at that age. Moving into behavior supports, these are students that are instructed via best standards. So they're on the gen ed curriculum and they would have active behavior intervention plans with also a crisis plan embedded in that. And so when we talk about CPI and some of our crisis intervention tools, those are things that would be embedded within the behavior plan for those students. And again, as we're implementing those behavior plans, if we're not seeing success with that in the general education setting, that would be when we would potentially be looking at doing for itself. We have three categories of how we would look at access point standards classrooms, really again, trying to identify student need. So the first is our access independent level and those are students that really need very minimal modifications to their curriculum. They might have some content delivery requirements needed. But, and if they do have behavior, those are typically linked to the need for explicit social skills instruction or because they have some impaired verbal abilities. Our access-supported classrooms have a little bit more moderate to significant needs as far as modifications to their curriculum and they may have some behavior that is linked to that functional communication piece. This particular model, we have worked to allocate a SLPA, which is a speech language pathologist's system to that school so that that person can be dedicated to place of work communication needs for the students in the classroom there. They also may need that explicit social skills instruction. Our access participatory are, would be for students that need significant modifications to that content or delivery and the majority of their day might be focused on healthcare. They might be focused on independent skills and that self-care is the goal for that area. We would still have prepay ESE. Our three-year-olds are typically eligible for services at that age. So we would, they are not eligible to go into a BPK program at that point in time. So that would, we would still have a three-year-old prepay classroom and then we would continue to have a four-year-old classroom when we determine that the interventions that are being provided are significant enough where the self-contained setting is still necessary. However, the majority of our students, we would really like to see in that inclusive opportunity of the BPK line. And last, we have our transition classrooms. So then we have our transition dependent, which are students that have met the graduation requirements and have deferred their diploma. And for those students, we're really looking at continuing that independent level of support and that daily care. For transition on campus, we are looking at, again, meeting that criteria for graduation. They're learning basic employment skills. Most of our high schools have transition programs and so when we have these programs on campus, they are, they have what we call enterprises and those are jobs throughout campus and they're working on some of those skills as they're, as the journey of transition. So they're also in conjunction with that practicing their data-driven skills so they can become more independent. After that, they would move to transition off-campus and the off-campus transition is really designed for when students are ready to start working more on those employability skills, potentially soft skills, resume writing, things like that. They are actually going out to the community. We have several partnerships with businesses and such that they would work towards. The hope after they get through off-campus transition is that they would either move on to Project Search or they would have an employment opportunity to achieve that. And so, our next steps moving forward, we are working towards communicating all of this information to our district, to our community, to our schools. We're also supporting those transitions for the students that are potentially moving to another school site. And then we're ensuring that all separate class school locations have all the resources that they need and I've listed some of them on there. Our team is also going out to each of those schools. We'll have the group of them that support the schools go out and really go through all of the model, what they should look for, what supports they should have and the resources that they need and how we would provide some district-level support for those classes. The other piece that we will be going through again this year is the inclusive scheduling process. So that's to make sure that we have the resources and supports in place and that we really look at our master scheduling and keep students with disabilities in mind. As for our school-level next steps, they'll be working, coming up and to communicate with families and their partner schools. So the partner schools, if there's a sending school and a receiving school, they'll be working together and communicating. We will be supporting those transitions for students that are switching schools. They'll also be monitoring, so if we have to switch equipment, we have to have resources go through, they'll be monitoring to make sure that it gets them to the right location and it's checked in appropriately. And again, they'll participate with us in that inclusive scheduling process.
With that, we are on to board and committee members. I just want to make one statement, I was going to do this prior to. I know we have quite a few people here with a comment for this action item, because this is informational, your comments will come during the comment section. So you know, you will be speaking on it, it will just be during that time, not during this. Dr. Chanoff, I'm going to start with you, is there anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, no, I want to thank Ms. LaLuka and her team, Dr. Clayton, Dr. Carson, you for doing the, doing the research, seeing where we are relative to other districts and then really approaching this with, with the best intentions of students first. As a, as an SLB student, this is very personal to me. So this, the ESE students are very, very important to me. As a former teacher and principal of a center school for autism and intellectual disabilities, I know what inclusion means, I know what inclusion does and I know how that can be transformational for so many students who otherwise wouldn't have that opportunity. It's because of this that, that we are moving in this direction as a district. It's clear that our current posture is very different than the rest of the state and certainly different than the state's average. And that should concern everybody. And we are not in a position to sustain where we currently are because our students will fall further and further behind and we cannot have that. And we are clearly seeing that the rest of the state is passing us because we have not adapted to what our students need in ESE. Those are my comments. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Cesar, you are.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you to you for the presentation, it was very thorough. I know that we probably asked questions beforehand, but I think we did ask additional questions. So I just wanted to confirm whether or not this would change the class size guarantee? Would, would we saw the same class sizes? Thank you.
Yeah, I just think that we just need to be very thorough, communicating between transparency to the admins, parents, and the teachers. I've been getting a lot of concerns with that and if you want to reach out, the best person would be Ms. Hillary LaLuka if you have any questions or comments. It's not a board decision and so she has all the information.
I think I want to add too, you know, I understand that change can be scary, but this is something that, well, some people have said they think that it's not been vetted or there hasn't been a fair timeline on this. I think it's evident today, it was the timeline that they provided, that there has been a lot of conversation and discussion around it. I think there's even committee members in the audience. So I thank you, those of you who are here, who serve on that committee and who have been part of that discussion, part of the process of taking this and really kind of owning it and embracing the change. I'm not someone that's afraid of change. I think that change can be good and I do believe that things can be great and actually for our students, I appreciate our teams that are here, that have been part of this work. And our floor is open for conversation. So while Ms. LaLuka is someone that has the most knowledge probably on this, we are still here to hear you and to help with answering those questions, asking the questions you have as well to our staff or if you're aware of it. So please make sure that you continue to speak with us. We will hear your comments later on tonight because I know there are many of you here that want to talk on this and want us to hear your opinions and we are here to hear it. But that's me, thank you very much. We are now on to our coordinate this conference. Do you want to help?
Thank you. So a couple of months ago, we actually, we actually approved the appointment of Mr. Tyon Downing to be our Coordinator of Safety, Security, and Emergency Management. But Mr. Downing was in the process of moving to Orlando when he was approved. So he is here tonight, and I wanted to give him the opportunity to introduce himself to the school board and to the district at large. Many of our school-based folks already know him very well. He has jumped in with two feet, Mr. Yates has made sure of that, that he gets around the schools and he helps our schools coordinate everything that they need to make sure that we're compliant. But then also to make sure that just basic, basic safety considerations are taken and, and looked for. And so he has a very thorough background in law enforcement, both at the, at the local, state, and, well, not both, at the local, state, and federal level. So it is my pleasure to introduce Mr. Tyon Downing.
Good evening, everyone. I am truly honored to accept the role of the Coordinator of Safety and Security and Emergency Management for the School District of Osceola County. I want to sincerely thank the school board members, Superintendent Chanoff, Chief of Staff Dr. Allen, and Director Yates for this opportunity. With 32 years of combined experience in the military and law enforcement leadership roles in various disciplines, my commitment to ensure the safety and security of the environments where our children and students can learn and grow without fear. Safety is a shared responsibility, and I look forward to working with educators, parents, and the community to strengthen the security and emergency preparedness across our schools. Together, we will continue to create a culture of vigilance, resilience, and trust. I want to thank you again for your confidence in me, and I am excited to leave a lasting impression on the school district. Thank you.
Our next appointment, well, our appointment tonight is Dr. Hope Strange. She'll be our new math coordinator for curriculum. So Dr. Hope Strange is held in the following position. Dr. Hope Strange is held in the following position. Teacher at McGelford Elementary in Westwood Middle, teacher at Celebration K8, instructional coach at Horizon Middle, elementary resource specialist for the Osceola School District, program specialist for elementary mathematics for Orange County Public Schools, senior administrator in the School Transformation Office for Orange County Public Schools, and education specialist K-12 mathematics for Osceola School District. She received her bachelor's degree in communication studies from the University of Iowa, a master's degree in elementary education from the University of Florida, and a doctorate degree in educational leadership from the University of Central Florida. And she knows her math facts.
I have a motion by Ms. Garcia. Second by Mr. Cook. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations.
So I'd like to say thank you to Dr. Chanoff, Madam Chief of Leadership, for allowing me this opportunity. I am both deeply humbled and excited to lead the K-12 mathematics team. And I would also like to thank the K-12 mathematics team for all of their hard work and dedication. And they are passionate advocates for high-quality mathematics instruction. And it is an honor to work with them every day. Finally, I want to thank the leaders from Osceola County who have mentored me and helped prepare me for this new role. Thank you again for this opportunity.
With that, we are revisiting our meeting for our public hearing with some people for 25 rulemaking and advocacy with John Boyer, our Chief Director of Government, and Lee Blanchard.
Good evening, members. Tonight, I'll read for a second time a summary of the rules and student progression plan provided for those participants. End of the record, and then pause for us to have an opportunity for public comments specifically to these rules. This in addition to public comments afterward. And then allow you an opportunity to take action on these particular issues. First one is Rule 5.40, Student Attendance. Revises the rule throughout to clarify that attendance requirements shall be included in the other student progression plan. 7.25, Grant Management. Revises Paragraph 3 to clarify that the New York State Office of Management and Budgeting and Strategic Amendments shall govern the stewardage of these federal funds. Revises Paragraph 4 to clarify that the authority of the superintendent of Decisions regarding record articles. Adds Paragraph 5 and 6 to comply with new state and federal requirements for grant administration and financial management of federal grant funds. Rule 8.54, Naming of Facilities in the Society. Revises Paragraph 2 to establish requirements and timelines for the incoming school transfer for that event, for the process of monitoring the schools. Adds Paragraph 3 to clarify that school board members may alter alternative recommendations of school and decision names. Revises Paragraph 5 to clarify criteria is proposed to school or to name a memorial license of person. And revises Paragraph 4 to delay obsolete requirements. To be clear, this rule does not change the school board's authority to name the schools. This is simply the process to go providing options for. Lastly, the Student Progression Plan on page 93 revises the section on alternate assessment preparation pathways for international learners to update the state-approved assessment tools available for this purpose. And that is, no whole slate changes all policies at this time of public comments that are specific to this school board, changes any changes.
Hangout standing in front of me, however, the full diehard, you have on page 9, but no items specified. Is this in relation to this or no?
No.
Okay. Is there anyone else that we missed, that has public comment on this? If you have public comment, you might tell us.
Could they just turn the mic up a little bit? I'm really having trouble hearing you.
I don't know what you're calling it.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Um, okay, with that, our public comment is, I have a question. Oh, sorry, did you fill out a paper?
Yes, I did.
Oh, okay. Your name?
Rafaela Bernard.
Uh, your state, that is ESE. Is this about the ESE or is this about this?
Oh, no, the ESE.
Okay, that'll come during public comment.
Oh, okay. I thought this was...
Okay, with that, public comment is...
At this time, without the board taking action on this issue.
And then, motion by Ms. Garcia, or second by Mr.... Ms. Garcia, all those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you so much. With that, we are reconvening our regular school board meeting. We are on to a superintendent recommendation. 5.01.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Staff is requesting the approval of the resolution authorizing the acquisition of PM Wells Charter School, including its personal property and the real property on which it's located, free of debt encumbrances, excluding easements contingent upon the surrender of the charter.
Is there any questions? Is there a question? Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Cook. Second by Ms. Bronson. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. With that, we are on to agenda modifications. Dr. Chanoff, any modifications?
No, Madam Chair.
Ms. Garcia? Mr. Cook? Ms. Garcia?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Bronson? Thank you. With that, I need a motion to approve the as presented.
I made a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I have a motion by Mr. Cook, is seconded by Ms. Garcia. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. With that, we are on to our informational agenda items. 13.01, our regular agenda for regulation chapter 14.1, approval of public state travel. Motion by Ms. Garcia, seconded by Mr. Cook. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. 15.1, approval of the naming of the K8 school. Double A. Do we have someone that's going to speak on this?
I can.
Our...
Oh, okay. Okay. All right. Thank you. Ms. Telenko?
We're waiting on a few members.
Oh, okay.
We're just waiting on a couple of our chairperson for the... Good evening, Board. The Plenary Principal for the new K8 school. I have Ms. Juergens here and our chairperson, Ms. Young and Ms. Toledo. She's one of our parent representatives. And we have finished the process and we're looking for the naming of our new school.
Hi, good evening. Step back for two seconds. That's what I... Sorry. Good evening. I'm your neighbor, Zleech. I'm excited to be here. I've been hiring another committee member on behalf of our naming committee. Some of the variables that contributed to our process of coming up with a name were the statutes related to school names, which was all new to me. I didn't know anything about that. As well as the naming conventions used by the most recent schools that were added to the district. Additionally, we reviewed the results of the commit community surveys. And we also all really shared this sentiment that we wanted a name that captured the natural beauty of the area of the school. If you have been there, oh my gosh, go at sunset. It's a sight to behold. It's beautiful. So with that, all of that considered, our committee came to the consensus on the name Cross Prairie K8. The school is located on Cross Prairie Parkway, which will be easier to find. And we also felt that using K8 would be a good designation for parents who are looking for a K8 school environment for their children, which can be very different from elementary and middle school.
Thank you. We have a motion by Ms. Garcia.
I strongly second that.
Seconded by Mr. Cook. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. We have our new school project. All right, with that, we are now on to public comment. I am going to remind the community that we have three minutes before public comment. This is Board Rule 2.22. Please make sure you save your name clearly for the record. And remember that we have some decorum and other policies around that. Please make sure that you are respectful of everyone in this room and of the previous members. First up, we have Diana.
Thank you, Board. I'm a parent of a first grader in the district. My son has autism and was assaulted in school at the beginning of the school year. We had to take him to the doctor's office, and another student ended up within school suspension. Initially, the teacher sent both of them to the dean for fighting. Thankfully, the dean reviewed the video and saw that my son did not participate and was simply body slammed by the other student. Had the video not been viewed, my son would have been in an equal amount of trouble because the other student lied and the teacher neither didn't believe my son or didn't want to bother with it. An event like that would follow him on his record. I was recently told by the administration that the school will no longer view video for any disciplinary actions at the suggestion of the district's lawyer. Kids who are bullied or assaulted at schools, particularly those that are in the exceptional student program, are far less likely to report incidents and hear retribution or shame. Having the video provide security, knowing that not only the video is a deterrent, but also if something happens, the offender will be held accountable. No parents I spoke with could believe that the school would refuse to view video and instead rely on he-said, she-said student accounts. These students would obviously also support the bully for their own safety or as part of being a part of the incident themselves. One parent in particular was extremely concerned because their child was a victim of terrible, inappropriate assault that gratefully was captured on video. The claim that the cameras are for security seems disingenuous at best unless every camera is monitored in real time. They provide no active security, but rather a record of past events. Viewing the video of actual violent or illegal events can, however, provide safety and security for the students by positively reporting who did what by a completely unbiased witness, the camera. I find it unconscionable that the district puts the safety and security of children in their care below a perceived potential for some sort of liability. I hope the board will do the right thing in the interest of the security and safety of those students in their care and hold offenders accountable for their actions by allowing the schools to utilize the video they already have access to. And Ms. Garcia, I received your email while I was standing over here, so I couldn't really address it. But it doesn't really apply to FERPA. And if it did apply to FERPA, in the documents relating to FERPA, it says disciplinary actions can be viewed on video. And then it could become part of the child's educational records. Then parents would actually get to view that video. I wasn't actually asking to view the video personally. I was just asking for it to be used by the deans in disciplinary matters when it's, when it's needed. But with that, thank you, and I appreciate all of you. And also, the meeting seems very positive and uplifting before I came here, so I appreciate it.
Thank you. Janet Woody?
Pagan Board, I am Janet Woody. I'm president of Osceola County Educational Association. And like all of you, I got a preview of what was presented by the ESE department tonight prior to the board meeting. And that was yesterday, and I will tell you that I spent a very sleepy night. Like any of you, I have hundreds and hundreds of phone calls and emails over the last couple of weeks.
Lots of them.
Because a lot of the implementation of this plan started back last year. And it's been a slow rollout. And so we've been able to see some of the concerns that are taking place with it. But I wanted to address a few things that I also already addressed in the meeting yesterday, but that I want you guys to know that I, that I want you to address these as well. The ESE to regular education ratio. I was told yesterday that we are only going to have one-third ESE students within the regular classroom setting. And right now, we don't follow that in all of our classrooms in Osceola County. We have some classrooms that are over 50% ESE. And so I want us to make certain that if that's what the committee is telling us is going to happen, that we hold them to that because that's going to be very important to learning growth for all of our students and to the mental well-being of both the students that we are pushing back into the regular education classroom as well as to the teachers who are going to be responsible to their education. The other thing that I'm concerned about is that we are taking several students in a setting of probably one to 12 with a couple of pairs in a classroom. We're putting them into a setting where in elementary, it would be anywhere from one to 18, 22, up to 25, depending on the grade level. And when we do that, we're removing their parent settings and we're giving them support facilitation. And support facilitation is usually a push-in for two to three days a week for reading and math. And so we are removing some of the supports with the parents not being present with the students in the classroom. And I have a concern about that. I have a concern about the potential certification and liability issues that our teachers are going to face if they have a loafers and they don't have a plan in place... teachers are gonna face if they have a locusts and they don't have a plan in place above an A plan and a B plan. Because we know A plan is called the office for help, but sometimes the office can't answer the telephone. So what's the A plan and the B plan? Um, the teacher can't, if they're the only body in the room, they can't run after one body and leave another room in the classroom alone. So that's a certification issue, a liability issue. There's also the safety concerns that take place with that. And I wanna make certain that the educators that I represent are protected from those liabilities that could occur. And the final thing that I want to say is that I'm really concerned that with this change, there was a lot of work before a student was ever placed into a self-contained classroom. A group of teachers, an MTSS plan was in place, there were observations, there were many things that took place, and an IDP committee was convened. And this was what this, uh, an IDP committee decided was the least restrictive environment. And it seems as though we are ignoring what a whole entire team of individuals that probably took one to two years to put together the documentation that needed to take place. And with these sweeping changes, we are ignoring what the first IDP and the initial IDP put into place. So I appreciate that you listened and, um, I hope that we can work forward and thank this for persons.
Amen.
For number nine, we have a lot of public comment ahead of us. We pray from the class that we have to come to comment. Um, sign down.
Um, I have a teacher in, actually in a contained classroom.
Can you state your name?
Zainella Loon. And these changes are very concerning for all the teachers that are in my position. And I just wanna make sure that you guys are taking into consideration the, the work that has been shown and included to protect its, protect their lawn and where they can get the maximum support that they need. I have heard a lot of the LRE, but sometimes we forget that the least restrictive environment for our kids, not necessarily is gonna be the same for everybody. And the least restrictive environment for my kids that are fighting, running around, that they don't know how to sit for these two, three minutes at a time, that they have a diaper, that they don't know how to eat by themselves. The least restrictive environment for them is gonna be being approved with children. And I want you guys to have in consideration that the support that they need, that they are receiving right now, with a ratio of maybe two adults, three adults in the classroom, and only eight kids or ten kids, that's not gonna be possible in a regular classroom. We were asking how we're gonna support our students when they go outside? And we have no answers. We asked about how the services that they need, that they are stated in their matrix, because most of them are two fifty fours. Who's gonna give the support in the regular classrooms? We have no answers. And we are very concerned about what staff's gonna do by next year. And I just wanna make sure that hopefully somebody's gonna listen that has been in a classroom, that no one will go through and ask their physics and will down the best of our students. And not necessarily does that gonna be in a regular classroom. The, the teachers in a regular classroom are one or twenty. Who's gonna take the kids to the bathroom? Who's gonna keep them to the lunchroom? Who's gonna be going out, out of the door with this student when they elope? Because it's too much noise in a regular classroom. We were asked about that support, we had no answers. So I'm just asking for a consideration because the plan looks beautiful on paper, but if you have never been in a classroom, you're not gonna know that that's not real for most of our students. I understand we have a high percentage of students in the content units, but I can talk for myself. I know the students that I have in my content classroom is because they need the support that they are receiving right now. And I wanna make sure that that's there for them.
So you can hear back there. Good evening, everyone. Zainelli Hernandez, this is me, three four seven five eight. Bitter Marshall, U.S. religious leader, pastor and chaplain to the U.S. Senate in nineteen forty-six, pray the following, quote, "Give to us clear vision that we may know where to stand and what to stand for. Because unless we stand for something, we shall fall for anything," end quote. We have witnessed this happening since early nineteen seventies. We did not stand for God in the Baptist square and Satan rushed in. We have fallen for anything and everything. What happened to the proposed chaplain in school program? What I just said happened. From this new board, no one, not one was both brave and courageous enough to take a stand for God and for the betterment of our local students' spiritual and mental state, not even willing to consider a pilot program for one of the most in need of hope, spiritual and emotional support new beginning schools. It has been made clear to many of us where you stand. The board resisted the opening prayer and the removal of the most disgusting porn and inappropriate books in school libraries. New members campaigned one way and end up staying as the others. I do not feel my district is being represented. You all end up opposing God just the same. Please do not be like those that do not stand for good and seek for evil. By not standing for good, you are siding with evil by default. If you are honest with yourself, we have had more people here supporting the program than those few that openly oppose God and confess they want to keep schools secular. They just want access to the students while stopping us. They want to keep influencing the young generation while opposing God. Do you know what I think? It was very hard to me to come to this, for me to come to this conclusion, but I do not see another reasonable and logical explanation. It says that you are discriminating against chaplains of the Christian faith. You refuse to listen to what the majority wants and voting in a legal program based on a policy modeled directly from Tallahassee, San Francisco. What else in nineteen? Remember this, blessed, fortunate, prosperous, and favored by God is the man who does not want in the counsel of the wicked, following their advice and example, Psalms one, one, Amplified Version, thank you.
Hi, Ayesha, thirty-two thirteen thirty-eight Avenue, this is me. Um, as a parent, my son was in that first group of ESE kids that got pushed out of self-containment. He was, it was January of his sophomore year, he had been in self-containment since first grade. It was a really hard transition for him. Luckily, I had a lot of support and because I'm a teacher, I knew who to call and who to ask for. Several times, I had to go straight to home office to get him placed in the correct classes. And now, he is finally a senior after five years in high school, taking all of his classes. But I had to fight for that because they weren't putting him in the right classes. So I'm just concerned about the kids that get pushed out of self-contained, not being able to handle it. He was, luckily, because he had me in his corner. Um, and he's planning his project search next year. Yeah, you can see that going to the police. As a teacher, however, I'm worried about the stress of the IDPs and test accommodations and just regular classroom accommodations for the kids who are going to the regular ed classroom. What we're noticing is those kids who need one-on-one help all day long, the regular ed kids, those tier one kids, are not getting the support they need. And that's where my concern is, because now it's not the least restrictive environment for them. Do you have a plan to get up to the help in the classroom for those teachers who are going to have the extra IDP work to deal with? Thank you.
Michelle Rodriguez?
Hi. My name is Michelle Rodriguez, and I plan later to establish a meeting at school. While this only being second floor meeting, I can second and my first time speaking, there are a couple of comments. This school that we're in, although it's highly intended to escape this, uh, it's no secret that our education as a whole is in crisis right now, and no sign of letting up. So I will make as much noise as I have to so that this board can fully understand the staff and students they represent and find real solutions to the problems we face every day. One of those problems is technology. Osceola County prides itself on being a one-to-one device district. However, at least in our secret little corner of Point Xiana, this is simply not true. While the idea of giving each student their own devices, great on pay credit, the issues that come with that only makes things more difficult in the long run. Charges and devices being missing, being left at home, or being in repair for weeks on end are things I hear from my students almost daily. These issues not only affect daily classroom use, but throw a massive wrench in a way, in the way our school in particular handles state and other standardized testing, which the powers that be claim abundantly clear is crucial, including in schools in Texas. With this being such an issue, I ask why we haven't moved to classroom sets rather than one-to-one? I will also be remiss if I fail to mention that our area was selected to pilot a new program that will hopefully solve a lot of these problems. I'm grateful, I'm grateful that we were selected for this, and to Dr. Chan out in the board. Um, and my fellow teachers and I can only hope that this is a step in the right direction and that we can soon begin to see improvements in our technology infrastructure. Thank you so much.
Don Brad or Brad?
Ray.
Ray. Thank you, Don Ray.
You're close.
Sometimes handwriting is a little hard to read.
Oh, I was doing it this way.
Got it.
My name is Don Ray. I'm four oh nine, four oh nine, St. Paul's. I wanna talk to you about the chaplaincy program. Couple of, like, last year, you had some John Aguero put in the backbone to stand up and actually force you to take a vote. But the one thing I want everybody in here to realize is that you are elected officials. We're the voters. And have you noticed that the climate in this country has changed? We're not putting up with you doing what you want anymore. You're gonna do what we want. And it was an eight to one count, the last time I was here, of people who wanted that chaplaincy program. Now, I've got a granddaughter that had her ma, her nana and I not been pastoral counselors. We would not have known the signs that this little girl was contemplating suicide. How many parents don't have that, 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 that skill set? And how many parents would voluntarily ask that a pastor, pastoral counselor, sit with their kids? And what I wanna know is, what don't you understand about volunteer? What don't you understand about a parent giving their consent to having someone counsel their children? And from what I understood, every one of you, including someone who came to an FRA meeting, who said they were going to be conservative, voted against this thing. This is terrible. You sit back and you don't realize that there are children there crying out for help and there's no one coming. There's no one going to come because there's no one in the schools. Now, you talked about last time, you guys had people from Orlando that you allowed standing up here to speak against something that we in Osceola County were looking at. That don't make sense to me. And I'm very upset, the fact that you, all of you, turned your back on a program that would be very beneficial. And what you must realize is that the rate of suicide amongst young children in twenty twenty-five has already gone up. And we are now entering a season where these children are contemplating suicide at a greater level. It is the early spring and the early summer months that these kids will do this. So what I'm asking for somebody, to get a backbone and put this back on the table and then allow us to come in and listen to the people from Osceola County, not people from Orange County. If you listened to the people from Osceola County, you would have voted in a yes for this program to get started. It's a law in Florida. Why won't you allow it to be into our schools? What are you afraid of? That's my question. What are you afraid of?
Yes.
Hi, after listening. Um, so I came here, I am a licensed teacher on grade three to five in Boston City. And, um, I don't know, there's a lot to hear about what, what happens to my position. Because I am trained in this behavior. And so, I have a tremendous amount of experience when it comes to children that are eloping, are having, um, behaviors that would be extremely difficult for a homeroom gen, a teacher to manage. Um, for example, I have a student currently that elopes. So how would a teacher with very limited staff go after a child that might be facing dangers right beside the school campus? Is that gonna be an issue? The other thing is that my daughter, she's an SLP student herself, in a classroom that perhaps has more than thirty percent of what's allowed for ESE students to be in the classroom. And so, that creates a challenge for my daughter, um, for her to have a fair and fair education. So I'm here to represent my daughter, I'm here to represent my students. Um, I don't think this is the right direction for them. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Michelle Martin. Um, I'm here as a parent. I do have two children with ESE. And the parent director again, she said that this kind of thing is not something that us parents are excited about. Um, I have super concerns that a locust should be fighting out, is my name is Simon Johnson. I'm here. And I'm concerned that it's not in self-containment, pretty safely, what's gonna happen. Just reiterate what I was saying before about people not having the certification for... Hi, Jonathan! Having the certifications for, uh, what to do with therapeutic plans, with IDPs. Um, these are all things that teachers have to go through, um, extra education. And, um, I'm just here to represent the parents, but I don't think this is a good handle.
Come on down.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Chapman. Formerly a highly effective district employee and mother of a sweet child with an extremely rare diagnosis. In fact, there's fewer than one thousand diagnosed every year. Sorry, totally emotional over the changes that could be coming to our district that impact my daughter significantly. We have worked extremely hard attending every IDP meeting possible, from the time she was in ESE pre-K to now, to fight for everything that she deserved within this county, to make sure she was insured the education that she deserved. We brought advocates, we have called numerous times the district office. If I showed you a picture of a group of atypical children, would you be able to specifically identify my child by name or another one in the group? Would you be able to tell me their diagnosis? What school they attend, their teacher, if they have a one-on-one? How many children are in their classroom right now? What kind of curriculum they're currently learning? How many of you are raising an atypical child? How many of you are working alongside our atypical children every single day, face to face, wiping her bum, feeding her, watching her have seizures after seizures within the classroom setting, having to give her an emergency medication so that she does not have permanent brain damage? None of you. But the children working alongside my child are, and I am at home, as well as my spouse and my children. So you can probably not tell me anything about those children, nor have you worked with them or raised an atypical child with atypical needs. Yet you believe you have the right to make a decision about these children for what's best for them and preaching about equal opportunity? My child does not belong in a self-contained... My child does not belong in a self-contained classroom, or in a regular educational classroom. And though I want inclusion, I also want what's best for my child as well as every other child in that classroom, the teachers and the support staff working alongside of them. The district preaches equal opportunities for all children, yet this decision takes away that opportunity from every child. This not only affects the self-contained atmosphere, but also the regular classroom, kids and teachers by mainstreaming these children into their rooms. I'm all for inclusion, but I also have a realistic goal in mind to be finding better opportunities for the kids to be included within. You say there will be four hubs per school zone, and I have a choice as to which hub I want my child to attend. But that's not the same choice that I have for my other three children. I can choose to choice them from Harmony all the way out to Osceola as long as I provide transportation for them. That is not the same opportunity for my self-contained child who deserves the best. Not only does this disrupt our children, but it also creates a war for teachers and support staff. And I'm sorry, I have so much more, so you'll be seeing me again at the next meeting.
Hey there, I'm Ina Whitfield, 46th, 305, Roman Road, St. Cloud. My family and I have two special needs children, they're adopted. We are currently at Harmony, in the same classroom with Ina Whitfield's daughter. My hope, our oldest daughter, our oldest of two, started at Lakeview. I fall for inclusion, I fall for her to be mainstreamed. Only to be fought against and her putting herself in classroom. And that is where she's now, and she's thriving. Little brother, who is also adopted, he's nine. He's a tiny little boy, he would have no idea, he's nine. He's in her classroom, he would never, ever be successful in a gen X classroom, never. He has a one-on-one at school, he has a one-on-one at church. We have therapists in our house, Monday through Thursday, to help with both of our children. He is thriving, he is doing good, he's learning. And if these changes take place, there's a chance my children might be in the same classroom. How am I going to take two children to two different hubs if they're not even considered to be on the same level of need? That's the first issue. The second issue is that you're determining what is best for my child, my children. You don't know. You don't know that Parker was adopted from my parents' agitpon. You don't know that he elopes. You don't know he eats hand sanitizer. You don't know that without his one-on-one, he would continue to run, he would continue to do the same. There are non-go for him. So while he's in this environment with peers and teachers and parents who love him and a school where he's adored, I see people in public who know my children, and I have no idea who they are because that school loves them. And you're about to take that away? It's not okay. Come to the classroom, see these kids, see how they're learning, see how they're thriving, and then tell me these hubs are the best idea? They're not. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Eric Lopigard, 1126, Mosaic Drive, South Washington, Tennessee. I have a child that is on the opposite spectrum. I really wish I would have had a better prepared statement for his night. I'm pretty darn involved with his IEP meetings and understanding what's going on. This is the first presentation I've seen of this.
You're here.
Amen!
It is extremely challenging for me to be able to come on, see pre-sentence online, and know how to respond. I'm standing in the back of this room with a bunch of other parents, and quite honestly, half of us might think that nothing is going on and the other half might think that something's different going on. We don't know. My school doesn't know. Asking them about what's going on at this meeting tonight, no clue. No clue what's happening. They encourage me to attend. So here I am. As a parent, I have been involved in this discussion. You say that there's not an action item tonight, and that appears to be very correct. The actions aren't even taken. Seems that the train is already moving down the road. And it's really struggling for me, as a parent, to be able to participate in this conversation if there's no opportunity to actually participate. So what I'm asking is, if the train is already out of the gate and we're moving in this direction, please provide the opportunity for parents to be able to learn what the actual statistics are, what you're actually planning on doing, and hearing how our experience is in the actual classroom itself. Because that's very different than what sometimes you get from a committee or hearing from a group that's in isolation, not being able to hear directly what's happening in the classroom. Thank you.
Rafaela Bernard.
My name is Rafaela Bernard, 1985, Rustic Falls Drive. My son, my son Jason Bernard has been attending, has been a student in the Osceola School District since he was four years old. He's currently an honor roll fifth grader at Enid Creek K-3A, which he loves. His IEP is for intellectual disabilities and hearing impairments. This year, he expressed a lot of disappointment and frustration about being placed in a classroom with a kindergartner who is in silk diapers. He questions all the time, why am I a fifth grader going in a classroom with him? I trusted the process and this teacher who is wonderful. I appreciate the focus of the new direction that we're going on, meeting the needs of each student rather than focusing on their disability. However, if my child is placed in general education setting without considering his readiness, I do have concerns about his safety, especially like the other parents that we heard recently about bullying. I respectfully ask you to consider the following questions. Under this new program, will the students of all ages will be placed together again in the classrooms? Two, where are the hubs? Where are they located? Should I be concerned that now my honor roll students will go from an eighth school to a T school? Or should I be concerned about his academics? Lastly, it is not okay to take the choice from us to provide the right education for our children. We should be involved in the decisions made, and like the parents just said earlier in the stages. Thank you for your consideration and your time.
Hello, my name is Elma Desla. My son is Sergio Desla. And I just want to say that I feel that the ESE department and Osceola County School has totally failed my child. He has been in Osceola County since he was three years old, and he's now thirteen, almost. And everything has failed since the teacher. He only had one new teacher his whole school career, I mean, two years. He's only had one new teacher. It was last year, he was doing so well, and then all of a sudden, he has gone down again because of the changes in teachers, all the time, all the time, all the time. I don't know if it is because they don't like to work with ESE students. I don't know what's going on, but there's so many changes. And I don't support for our kids, I mean, the less probably with the ones that are not high functioning. You know, probably the ones that are high functioning are better, but my son has not had the good support. Three minutes is probably not going to be enough for me to discuss, but I would like for you to take the information that is on the sheet and please contact me or let me contact you guys so we can find a good plan that maybe, I don't know, maybe is not what's being proposed and what the changes are going to be. So I just want to be heard in more detail and be less nervous because I can say you guys noticed. But I would like to be heard by Ms. Rochelle and see if we have a better plan. And for other kids that are probably in the same situation.
Sorry if I mess up this name, but my last name is Kim Nani. I don't know how to pronounce your first name. Bob Hatten?
Yes. Hi. Um, I am a parent of a neighbor in Lake Hurley, 93. And I'm so thankful that we have a one-on-one in fact, or an AEP professional with him on the entire day. And but according to the presentation, I have so, so many questions. I don't know if you guys will answer it right now. But in one case, we say that we believe in inclusion. In the second place, we say that we are going to create a hub. Why is this separation and inclusion women? Why is this separating? How are you going to manage the kids that have behaviors? And I have been in schools, so I know how bad the behaviors are. The classroom, half the type of this room, and I would say four, five adults with twenty-five kids, really? If you have four or five ESE kids in a classroom and they have one-on-one support, that means you have six adults with twenty-five kids. How are you going to do that? First thing. Second thing, if you guys are not going to provide one-on-one to all those kids, then how are you going to train the teachers? Who, mind that, please, you know, don't take me wrong, the teachers are amazing. But they are not going to leave the twenty kids in the classroom and run behind a person, a child who is an eloper. This entire thing does not make sense at all. Thank you.
Um, Mandero?
Hi, good evening, my name is Estelle Mandero, Community Director, Reserve Boulevard, St. Clair. So first of all, I want to say that I knew about this meeting because of my neighbor. I had no idea, it was kind of like a top-secret thing, I don't know why, but somebody said that we should be included, included in every decision that happens in the life of our kids, right? So this has been in the process for a while, and I just don't understand why we have not been included. I know that every one of you want the best for my kids. I have no doubt about that. You want for an office to be in those seats because you care. But as you care, we care, right? Unless you have a kid with disability in your house or a member in the house, you will never know how we live, how we eat, how we suffer, our feelings, the things that destroy our heart because we see a kid that have a syndrome. There's one, fifteen, and twenty-five thousand. Mismaking a syndrome is a syndrome that makes you sad. It's not even considered a disease. Insurance don't even pay for that, so he has to be cased in the level autism, autism level three. Level three autism, OCD, ADHD, they're very problematic disorders in non-verbal. He's a seven-year-old, the most amazing kid. Two weeks ago, he's in a self-contained classroom with ten kids. He's running to the door, into the door, and he cut himself. He's cut me forehead, and he got seven stitches. He imitates anything that he sees, but he's safe. He is safe. Now, I think about all inclusiveness and all this, and I think I'm all for it. Somebody said it right here, and I'm all for it. And I wish one day my kid could be in general ed, right? But I know the level of this right now. And I think about all the hubs and all that, and you know what? He was in a charter school two years ago that had, they had these elements of every inclusiveness. I'm not going to say the name of the charter school, but for me, it was a scam. Unlocking children's potential, that was the slogan of the school. He went to that school with seventeen other kids that supposedly were atypical. And what happened, he regressed on behavioral like two years. Why? Because the teachers were not ready, they were not prepared, they were not trained, and they have seventeen kids with my kid running around and being what I can see.
Thank you, Mandero, you can have your free.
All right, so I just want to say, just think about what you're doing, or just say for a week.
Nicole DiGarc?
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Nicole DiGarc. I am a parent unfortunately in Osceola County, where he was trying to do a mommy. I've had some great luck in the Osceola County area with certain teachers, but this decision has really got me concerned. I als well, just like this gentleman who took every word out of my mouth for someone who is not a parent today, only found out about this whole talk that supposedly was happening since 2023. According to the slides, too recent. So when I heard about it from my advocate, it was brought up during the course of the IEP meeting, I had a lot of concerns and a lot of, obviously, just like all of the rest of us, like, what's going on? Mr. Luca actually wanted to contact me to say, I hear you have some concerns. What can I share with you? So I said, well, is this actually happening? So I got a little bit of information, not one study here that has been going on since 2023. And I think it's not fair for us as parents who have not been involved, but you all have a lot of questions. Not necessarily saying that your ideas may even be bad ideas, but you haven't presented all the information to us to where we can also leave our confidence. So what I'm asking is that if this is something, like you said, if the train's already on the path moving forward, at least let us speak, at least don't do this two weeks before spring break. We come back, we have three months of school left, August, here we go. So if this is something that we want to roll out, let's talk it through, let's look at it for it and follow here and.
With that public comment is closed, here onto our attorney's report. It's important to have the. Uh, we have the word member comments and committee reports. Ms. Versi, any committee reports?
This is actually what was presented, the ESE advisory committee and the presentation.
We can hear you.
We can hear you.
That we have our ESE advisory committee meeting last week, and the same presentation that you saw is the same presentation we got last week. And from the, I have that. So all the, everything was, we discussed, the parents, they brought their concerns, and that was a moment, and that's all.
Uh, is there any committee reporting?
Um, I have no updates on any committees that have met since the last meeting, but I will be attending the value adjustment board meeting next month. That is part of one of my committees, and I'm talking about if there's any.